I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on February 13th, 2020. If you're eligible, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, heard that.
We have a published agenda and consent agendas. Can I get a motion?
I've moved to approve the agenda and consent agendas presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries, and we have an agenda. And first up on our agenda, under public recognitions and presentations, is the Boy Scout Tree Roundup Presentation. Can we please have the Boy Scouts come up to give that presentation?
Hi, my name is David Mason. I'm from Troop 222, and I am a Life Scout. I will be presenting to you on the Lacey City Tree, Christmas Tree Pickup with my associates Nate Tullock and Logan Vogel. In December of 2019, Boy Scouts and city staff met to review the 2020 plans for the upcoming tree pickup. On that day, we reviewed maps and divided the city into sections so it could be more easily managed. On January 4th of 2020, we then picked up the trees. The locations that we dropped the trees off were Rainier Vista Park and Salish Middle School. Asplund Tree Service donated trucks, chippers, and several workers to grind up the trees at the drop-off sites. LeMay donated dumpsters at drop-off sites for transporting trees and chips to the Thurston County Waste and Recycling Center, and Thurston County Solid Waste and Recycling accepted the trees and chips at no charge. On Saturday, January 4th, we collected the trees. Troops 222 and Troops 101 participated in the street annual tree pickup. Many scouts, troop leaders, family members, friends, and others helped to join and participate in this event. We found it more efficient to fill the LeMay bins with chips rather than trees to reduce space per tree. At both sites, we filled three dumpsters with chips and four with whole trees. I'll now pass it off to my associate.
My name is Logan Vogel. I am 13, and I am a Star Scout, and I'm the SPL of Troop 101. We picked up a total of 1,000 trees. The nations were a total of $1,846. Many trees were picked up after the original collection because some people forgot to take up their tree, some people were out of town, some people were working on the day of the collection, and there was a little bit of misinformation. For Troop 222, the total hours were 238. They picked up a total of 810 trees, and they earned $1,446. Troop 101 earned 60, worked 65 hours, collected a total of 158 trees, and earned $400. For a total of 303 hours, 964 trees picked up, and a total of $1,446 earned.
Nate Tullock, I'm from Troop 222, and I'm currently a Star Scout. This shows the years from 2016 to 2020 when we picked up trees, and the total was 2,239 hours donated. We collected 5,955 trees and earned $10,654. In 2020, our hours were 303. We collected 964 trees, and we earned $1,846. This was both a fundraiser and a community service project where scouts learned the value of serving their community. Funds raised support troop expenses including campouts, summer camp, merit badges, and other troop activities. Scouts and adults both look forward to this fun project, and citizens appreciate the scouts picking up the trees, and it provided great public relations for the Boy Scout.
Donations are still accepted at our troop website at www.troop222wa.org, or by mail. And if you're writing a check, then you please make it out to Troop 222. We'd like to give a special thanks to Andrew Riggs of LeMay and Pacific Disposal, who donated dumpster bins for us to use and use to transport the chips and trees to and from the Thurston County Waste and Recovery Center. I'd like to thank Lonnie Poling of Asplund Tree Service, who donated trucks, chippers, and staff. Some of them drove over an hour to volunteer at this event. I'd also like to thank the Thurston County Waste and Recovery Center, who accepted the trees and the chips at no charge, and the City of Lacey for their support staff and public notices. Thank you.
Can I? Can I get all the Boy Scouts to come up? So next on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. When you come up, can you please state your full name and keep your comments about three minutes? And the first person who signed up is Jake Cusney.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jake Cusney. I'm an inventor and businessman. As some of you, pardon me, as some of you may have heard, I've been attempting to remodel my building here in Lacey so that I can relocate my business here. The building I own is right next to the Bus Barn and the Boys and Girls Club off Carpenter Road. When I purchased it three years ago, it was quite the mess, quite the safety hazard. There were drug addicts living inside, as well as many trespassers. We've kicked out dozens of trespassers, some as young as seven, that were exposed to the safety hazards there. When I began cleaning up the property to simply make it safer and evaluate my own agenda, I was met with a blank stop work order prior to actually doing any permissible work. The City of Lacey has done an excellent job at appearing to be welcome to new business, enough so that I invested in this community and wanted to relocate both my business and my family here. Yet, instead of the city doing anything to assist, cooperate, or help in any way, this morning I was standing in criminal court being charged with violating a stop work order. Another blank stop work order that is invalid at its face. I'm here today to share with you that I do not want to fight with anyone. I simply want to get back to what I love doing, running my business and enjoying time with my family. The City of Lacey has put me in a position where I do not have any other options. Rather than working with me, the Building Department has attempted to sabotage and impose unlawful conditions upon the issuance of permits at every step. Permits that should have been routinely issued for the repair and remodel of an existing structure in a like-for-like environment. I'm sure that many of you here have done like work to your own buildings and routinely obtained those permits with ease. For over two years now, nearly three, the city has attempted to impose unlawful conditions, including a dedicated easement, a waiver of existing street access, another unlawful erroneous conditions to numerous details, pardon me, too numerous to detail here tonight. At this point, I brought a handout for tonight's speech, which I handed out to you all earlier. I would hope that the City of Lacey and all of you here tonight would share in my goal of creating more jobs here and having another economically successful business in your town, free from unlawful impediments placed on my business by the Building Department and others. Thank you for your time and for hearing me tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jake. Next up is Chris Van Deal.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder, members of the City Council. My name is Chris Van Dallen, and I'm here tonight as a member of a local organization called the Thurston Climate Action Team. It represents thousands of fellow citizens throughout Thurston County, including hundreds of Lacey residents. I myself live in Olympia, but I'm here today representing our whole organization. And, you know, we're kind of a bunch of people who have seen the writing on the wall, see the problems that are staring, coming down at us from climate change. It's really a desperate situation. In a lot of ways, it really threatens a lot of our economy and our environment at the same time. And so together, these folks are trying to lead to a future where we can leave a habitable planet to our children. I myself was 14 when I learned about climate change, so that was 40 years ago, when scientists have been warning us that this is a big problem coming at us. And here we are, 40 years later, not really taking strong action. However, Lacey City Council, you know, showed a lot of wisdom in supporting, approving, and funding the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which I've been actively working on as a member of the Buildings and Energy Task Sector Focus Group, developing strategies and actions for the plan that will help you, you know, work on slashing the carbon emissions from buildings, which represent 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions in Thurston County. 25% of that, by the way, of our emissions are from residential buildings. And so, you know, I really wanted to thank you for supporting that, but really, the devil's in the details, and more importantly, in the implementation. So the plan will be eventually being put out from Thurston Regional Planning Council, and, you know, then it'll come back to you guys to adopt and then implement the plan. What I wanted to say is, you know, we don't necessarily need to wait until the plan comes out because you know a lot of the things that are going to be in the plan. You know what you need to do. So now's the time to really start preparing, training staff, hiring new staff, you know, going through different policies and plans to review them in the light of the kinds of changes, the kind of big changes that we're going to have to make to address this. And so I urge you to show that support and prepare ahead of time and be ready to hit the ground running when that plan hits your dais. And, you know, this is important for me as a middle-aged white man who found out about climate change when I was 14, and I've lived my whole life with this kind of fear, and I've been an activist my whole life on this. But I don't want you to take it from me. I want you to take it from the youth of our community, who have been out in the front, leading this call to action, hundreds, you know, thousands of people, young people here in Olympia and Thurston County, and millions of people around the world. And they're the ones who really are going to have to live with the impacts of it and the decisions that we make today. So I urge you to, you know, really get serious about it and take some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Frank Turner.
Hi, I'm Maya Hansen, and I'm a freshman at Avanti High School.
Hi, I'm Anders Hansen, and I'm in 7th grade at Reeves Middle School.
I'm Frank Turner from Olympia, and I'm active in the Thurston Climate Action Team and several other groups that call for proactive approach to climate change. We all have come here tonight to urge you to develop and implement the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, which is underway, as you know. The evidence is strong for climate change. We can see a lot of this evidence with our very own eyes, such as the loss of polar ice, the retreat of glaciers, the warming of sea, and extremes of weather. These are the things that scientists have been predicting for decades, but the change is coming even faster than they predicted.
People all over the world are taking action and asking their leaders to lead on climate.
Despite inconsistent support from our federal government, individuals have made a lot of progress.
Americans of all political groups are aware of climate change and want to come to grips with it. I used to be concerned mainly about my grandchildren. But now I believe that my children, even my own generation, are going to have to deal with the consequences of a warming planet. We're fortunate to have this early warning, I mean, 40 years ago. We can't ignore it. Even if we're confused or skeptical, the new normal will be hard to predict. Rising seas, food shortages, new diseases. How will we have to change our lives to meet this challenge? Inaction won't work. The situation requires timely community action. Our goal is clear. We want a livable, safe community. But the path is uncertain, and we're fortunate to live in a community that's unafraid to face this kind of situation. You leaders of Lacey, Tumwater, Olympia, and Thurston are stepping forward with this plan of action. This is what's been lacking up until now, and we really need this plan. In our community, you have the support of thousands of individuals and scores of climate organizations. We're here to support you as we all go forward with the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next up, Hillary Hunt.
Good evening, council members. My name is Hillary Hunt. I've been either a Lacey resident or Lacey adjacent for most of my life, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about access to one of my favorite businesses in our community, Gabby's Cards and Comics, located at 4230 Pacific Avenue Southeast. Gabby's, as it is affectionately known in our community, is an incredible business that not only provides comics and gaming supplies to its customers, it serves double duty by working as a community senator. Sorry. Children can find lunches there during summer break. They can pick up lunch, or school supplies during the fall. Gabby and her customers organize massive drives for adoptive family at Christmas and drives to provide people food at Thanksgiving. It's open and a welcoming business that provides a place of entertainment and respite for many in our community. Unfortunately, access to this business is much harder than it needs to be. The curb cut from Pacific Avenue is bizarrely small, generally allowing passage for only one vehicle at a time, meaning that a car exiting the property blocks any vehicles trying to enter the property and possibly causing a backup in Pacific Avenue in the process while cars that want to enter the business are trying to exit. Simultaneously, the driveway is offset to the left of the property. So even if you're driving like you normally would on the right side of her driveway, which is large enough to accommodate two cars, you're driving this way. The entrance is over here on the left, which leads many customers to drive straight off the curb, potentially damaging their vehicles. I've done this myself, and I've seen many people in the community do so as well. I'm particularly concerned when Gabby is working as a community center with a lot of low-income members of our community, that people who cannot afford to have this damage done to their cars are suffering really significant damage from this city property that is strangely and inappropriately placed. In addition, it means that people might not expect cars to be coming off an unmarked area of the sidewalk that to a pedestrian may not look like a place that a car is about to drive off. But cars don't realize, because they cannot see when you're exiting the property very well, the gradient difference between the curb and the entrance, because it's not where you expect it to be, and it's not painted. And it can cause a risk to pedestrians trying to exit the property. I feel like it's a real safety hazard in our community. It's an accident waiting to happen. I've talked to a number of customers. Actually, just passed out a packet to you. It is a short summary with just a couple days of talking to other customers, of email comments we've received in support of an effort to fix that curb, and as well as comments that we've received on Facebook from people who have injured their own cars, seen other people do it, and just expressing their support that we really hope the City of Lacey will take action, look at that access on the property and how it coincides to the sidewalk, and consider doing something to address that issue.
Thank you very much, Hillary. Hopefully, we can maybe refer this to our Transportation Committee, suggestions?
Yeah, this isn't something that the city fixes. This would be the responsibility of the property owner. So they can come forward and talk to us. It doesn't really warrant Transportation Committee meeting.
Okay, well, we can talk about this.
And I can give this person some contact information.
Okay, we'll try to figure out a solution there. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Wayne Olson.
Good evening, Mayor Ryder, City Council members and staff. My name is Wayne Olson, resident of Lacey. I am here as an advocate for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, representing the Thurston Climate Action Team and my grandchildren. You've seen me here many times before, so I won't repeat my background, other than that I have nearly 30 years as experienced as a Navy meteorologist and oceanographer, and another nine years that I taught climate science as a unit of my atmospheric science course and oceanography courses at Pierce College. Last week at your work session, you heard about the Regional Transportation Plan from the Thurston Regional Planning Council Executive Director. Transportation is responsible for over 35% of the greenhouse gases in Thurston County, similar to the rest of the country. As a quick review of why that is a concern, buildup of CO2 in the atmosphere is cumulative. Once it's there, it stays for about 100 years. The more we put into the atmosphere, the more we drive with gas, the more and faster the world heats up. Globally, humans are now putting in about 40 billion tons of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere annually, and our atmosphere is showing it. CO2 concentration equivalent is now about 415 parts per million and rising at a rate of just under 3 parts per million every year. Doing the math, at that rate will be around 450 parts per million by 2030, and over 500 parts per million before 2050. Climate modeling and history shows us that that will result in an average global temperature increase of over 2 degrees Celsius, or almost 4 degrees Fahrenheit, average over the globe since 1900, and that is a place that we don't want to reach, that level. Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan will provide numerous actions that we can take locally to do our part in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Foremost among those are incentives for an early transition to electric vehicles powered by electricity generated by renewable resources. Fairless bus systems, that's terrific, and other mass transit. Incentives for carpooling, handy park-and-ride facilities, congestion mitigation to avoid vehicle idling, and zoning for 20-minute neighborhoods are a few of the additional methods of reducing vehicle miles traveled and reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our increasing population. I applaud and thank you for your continued support in the development of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, and I urge your full implementation upon the recommendations. And it can even start, as several others commented, even earlier, before the plan is formally produced and put out this summer or fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next up is, under proclamations, our African-American History Month proclamation.
Whereas during African-American History Month, many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development are celebrated, and whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of African-American in American history, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families, communities, and the nation, and?
Whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted black scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and initiated Negro History Week in 1926, and?
Whereas the first kidnapped Africans were brought to this country 400 years ago and was the beginning of legalized slavery that lasted for 250 years until emancipation in 1863, and?
Whereas, as a result of their determination, hard work, perseverance against all odds, South African-Americans made valuable and lasting contributions to the community, the state, the nation, achieving exceptional successes in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, the military, sports, the arts, and?
Whereas ASALH's 2020 theme, African-Americans and the Vote, emphasizes the significance of African-American participation in the electoral process at all levels of society.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim February as African-American History Month in the City of Lacey, and urge all citizens to recognize the continuing need to battle racism and to build a society that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed, myself, Mayor Andy Ryder. This is February 13th, 2020. Do you have someone to come up and accept this? So much. Thank you. Say a few words?
Mayor Ryder, and to all the council members, I am Bishop Lorenzo Peterson, and on behalf of the New Life Baptist Church, which was founded in 1975, June of 1975, by Reverend Henry G. Marshall. So New Life has been around for about 45 years now. The first service was held in the Friendship Hall of the Olympia YWCA. So we are very, very proud of our church. We're proud of our community. We are certainly proud of our nation, and we're thankful for all of the African-Americans who have contributed to the development and growth of our nation. So it is with pride that we receive this proclamation tonight on behalf of the members of New Life and the African-American community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up on our agenda, our agenda is under the City Manager's report. City Manager.
I'm Mayor and City Council. We have a number of items before you today. I'm going to have Rick combine two of those. One is the approval of an inter-agency agreement with the Wash State Department of Commerce for a grant to complete a regional housing action plan. The other is, which is related, an approval of an in-local agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, and Thurston Regional Planning Council for the housing action plans. Rick, can you provide background on that?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. This effort all started with a substitute House Bill, 1923, that was passed by the legislature in 2019. And what that bill did was it authorized Department of Commerce to set up a grant program for local communities to develop housing action plans. And the award, maximum award for that grant program for each jurisdiction was $100,000. As Olympia, Tumwater, and the City of Lacey, we all started talking about that effort, and we realized that we have a very combined local housing market with our jurisdictions. And so we tried to leverage that money by combining a grant application where we would ask for a combined a combined total of three hundred thousand dollars, and where we can share that, some of that grant funds to hire Thurston Regional Planning Council to do a deep dive and develop a lot of the demographic and background data to support this planning effort. So, with that, that evolved into two separate agreements that's before the council tonight. The first one is an interagency agreement with Department of Commerce, because with, even though we had a combined ask of three hundred thousand dollars with all three jurisdictions, each jurisdiction is receiving fifty thousand dollars directly to work on our local plans, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will go towards the City of Olympia, then contract with Thurston Regional Planning Council. So, the agreement, or interagency agreement with Department of Commerce is for the city's portion of that fifty thousand dollars. And with that, we will utilize those funds to look at our local housing market, specifically identify potential development and redevelopment sites, look at their suitability for different types of housing, what are some of the infrastructure demands for that location, and then what type of supporting infrastructure may be needed, as well as develop analysis of market constraints based on development costs versus local rental prices, develop a recruitment strategy for types of builders that can build the type of housing that's envisioned in the city's comp plan. The interlocal agreement portion, that's the agreement with Olympia, Tumwater, and the City of Lacey and Thurston Regional Planning Council, and that's that combined effort where we all agree that the City of Olympia would manage those funds and subcontract with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And that effort will produce a scope of work that will develop a residential, excuse me, regional housing needs assessment. That will include such things as landlord and tenant surveys to get a better handle what the local rental market looks like. There's a lot of data out there for home sales, household size, and wages, but there's not a lot of accurate data related to the rental market. So, we want to get a good background data on those, that segment of the market. It'll also take a look at and update our inventory of our housing stock of what type of housing we have, as well as conduct a trends analysis, looking at the affordability types and income levels, with that projecting future needs for the region. And then, after that, based on that effort, then we'll take recommended strategies, and each local jurisdiction will identify those strategies that best fits their needs. And then, of course, with the City of Lacey, we would update our housing element of our comp plan with those actions that would fit Lacey's unique nature. So, with that quick background, again, the request is the council take two actions. The first action is to authorize the city manager to sign the interagency agreement with the Department of Commerce to accept the fifty thousand dollar grant work directly. And the second action is to authorize the city manager to sign the interlocal agreement with the City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, and Thurston Regional Planning Council to do the regional market and demographic work. City of Tumwater and the City of Olympia have already taken action, so this is the last action to consummate that agreement. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Can I motion, please?
I move to approve the interagency agreement with the Department of Commerce and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And next up is the motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, and the Thurston Regional Planning Council for the housing action plans, and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Can I get a motion for that?
I'd move to approve the interlocal agreement with the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and the Thurston Regional Planning Council for the housing action plans, and authorize the city manager to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'm happy to see this.
Me too.
I'd like to make one comment. So, I know that both Thurston County Realtors and the Olympia master builders would be a great resource in answering a lot of questions that we have and the efforts that we're making. We could effectively do that without taking grant money. Just a passing thought.
And that is a good point. One thing I did leave out is part of this process is to convene a regional stakeholder group, which we would invite those groups to that table, as well as do public participation effort on this.
Right. In Exhibit A, it states that Realtors are going to be consulted. So, at least we have that.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
So, the next item before council is Lacey Fire District Three, Mullen Road Annexation, and Ryan Andrews, our long-range planner, will provide that information.
Good evening. The city has received a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings filed by Lacey Fire District Three. The filing of the notice is the first step in a two-step annexation process under the petition method. This requires a petition filed by property owners representing a minimum of ten percent of the valuation of the area proposed for annexation. And as a result of the petition, and why we're here tonight, is that the council must pass a motion notifying the petitioners of its approval, rejection, or modification of the annexation area's geographical boundaries. If the council votes to approve the ten percent petition, then the applicant moves forward in obtaining a petition from a total of sixty percent of the assessed valuation of the area. That would be the second step in the two-step process. A little bit about the proposed annexation area. Shown on the screen here is the five parcels that are part of the application. The application, as I mentioned, was submitted by North Thurston, excuse me, Lacey Fire District Three for property that they own. In looking at the boundary, we are effectively squaring it off. Mullen Road runs east-west, some city property on the eastern boundary, the fire district property on the west. And so, by incorporating all of this area creates a logical boundary. So, it's in the lakes planning area, north of Mullen Road, east of Timberline High School, and west of Rumack Street southeast. Sixty-six point zero-four acres and five separate tax parcels. The Lacey Fire District Three parcel, which is this red-roofed building there, the property that that sits on, is eight point four acres in size, containing Fire Station Number Thirty-Three. We, the City of Lacey, owns a large portion of that eastern area known as the Mullen Habitat Reserve. This is a little over thirty-two acres. The three remaining parcels include one single-family residence to the north, an undeveloped parcel, and Timberline Baptist Church, excuse me, totaling sixty-six acres. The assessed value of this area is about a little under two point seven million dollars, of which the Lacey Fire District Three ownership represents about one point eight million dollars for sixty-seven percent of the assessed valuation. It's important to note that Lacey Fire District Three, City of Lacey, and Timberline Baptist Church parcels are all exempt from the payment of property taxes. So, even though the assessed value is two point seven million, it's not something that will generate a significant amount of revenue in terms of property taxes. As you can see on the map, the area proposed to be annexed is largely undeveloped, except for the fire district, the church, and that single residence. Most of the property is a large wetland complex that connects between Hicks and Patterson Lake, and so it will remain essentially relatively undeveloped for the future. Looking at the zoning, currently the zoning is low-density residential zero-to-four. The purpose of this low-density residential zero-to-four zone is to provide a single-family residential designation. If the annexation is approved, the critical areas will be designated with an open space institutional zoning, in keeping with the city's policies on designation and protection of critical areas. Additionally, floodplain associated with Hicks Lake, shown in blue there, would be extended through this property as a natural shoreline in the city's shoreline master program. A little bit about the utilities. Utilities, this is a map showing those existing sewer lines. Right now, there is an existing sewer line that runs in Mullen Road. It terminates just about right at the fire station. The fire station itself is not actually connected to city sewer, and then on the eastern boundary. Currently, there is a project on Mullen Road that will basically redevelop it, bring it up to standards, put in bike lanes, sidewalks, street trees, those kinds of things. And that project will also fill in that gap in the sewer line as well. Water, water is well-served with a twelve-inch line that runs the full distance of the area to be annexed. So, utilities really aren't an issue, especially with the development of the Mullen Road project here in the near future. The Utilities Committee of the City Council looked at the annexation and is recommending approval tonight as well. A little bit about that Mullen Road construction. Currently in the construction phase by Thurston County, you'll notice that the proposed boundary, the northern edge of the proposed annexation, does not include Mullen Road. The reason for that is because of the project. We've reached out to Thurston County, and they've been amenable to waiting to annex that portion of Mullen Road until such time that it is brought up to full standards, so that it doesn't create any kind of issues between jurisdictional boundaries until that project is complete. So, as I mentioned, a little bit about the process and why we're here tonight. So, the petition has been submitted, this initial ten percent petition. After filing of the petition, the city council must pass a motion notifying the petitioners of its approval, rejection, or modification of the annexation area's geographical boundaries. If the council votes to approve the petition, then the applicant moves forward on obtaining a petition from a total of sixty percent of the assessed valuation of the area. Once the city receives that sixty percent petition, the city can move forward on annexation proceedings. Both staff and the Utilities Committee are recommending approval of the annexation, and the language for the motion is in the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, actually, I would move to approve the motion to proceed with a proposed Lacey Fire District Three, Mullen Road annexation proposal that includes the four provisions as outlined in our report, which is to authorize the applicants to circulate a petition, to require the four parcels around the parcels, Smith, for the notice of intent, to require the assumption of all or any of the portion of the existing city indebtedness, and to waive the requirements for the completion of the annexation study.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now, just a little quick background on this. This annexation is actually proposed prior, and when it was proposed prior to this, it included the road, and that caused all sorts of problems. And we realized at the time it just wasn't going to work. And so, we actually sort of didn't go through with the annexation. But Lacey Fire District Three is in the middle of a major remodel, and would like to work with the City of Lacey. And so, we actually brought this up to the county chair and the county manager and said, you know, what can we do to help out Lacey Fire District Three in that? And he goes, well, just go up to the road, don't include the road, and we can go forward. And so, that's what they proposed, and that's why we're here now. Is there any other discussion?
I think that's a good solution. Thank you.
I do, too.
I don't think it takes seven hundred-plus years to pay off.
That's true. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a bid to replace the Regional Athletic Complex Synthetic Field Number Five, which is the large baseball field and the soccer field known as Number One. And Ashley Smith will provide that report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here to talk to you about the RAC Synthetic Field Replacement Project. Staff recommends you award Lacey Contract Number PW2020-03 to Coast to Coast Turf from Seattle, Washington, in the amount of six hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and three dollars and nineteen cents. Lacey Thurston County Regional Athletic Complex, RAC, is located on the corner of Sillicum and Marvin Road. This hundred-acre facility features five ball fields and six regulation-sized soccer, football, or rugby fields, as well as a number of additional park amenities. Soccer Field Number One and the ball fields were constructed in two thousand and eight. The subgrade life expectancy for those fields is twenty to thirty years. However, the turf life expectancy is about ten years with moderate use. So, the infields for ball fields one through four have already been replaced in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and the remaining two fields due for replacement are Ball Field Number Five and Soccer Field Number One. This is the current condition of both ball fields. You can see significant wearing, infill migration of the rubber material, and some seam separation occurring. So, the product we'll be installing with this phase is different than what's currently installed there. We are transitioning to a root zone diamond series product, which has a root zone layer that encapsulates the rubber infill material and prevents excessive spray, infill migration, and that all results in better durability. You'd think that this improved product would have an additional cost over previously's products. However, we've been able to use cooperative purchasing agreements and get that cost down even further. This photo is from the RAC Ball Field Number Three turf replacement that occurred last year. We utilize an interlocal purchasing agreement with Sourcewell to negotiate with Coast to Coast Turf, who's the regional supplier of AstroTurf. And construction is expected to start July first for Ball Field Number Five and September first for Soccer Field Number One. Each is expected to last about two weeks. At this point, if anyone has any questions.
Can I get a motion?
I have a quick question.
Can I get a motion?
I would move to award Lacey Contract Number PW2020-3 to Coast to Coast Turf in the amount of six hundred and eighty-three, hundred thou, six hundred eighty-three, five hundred, okay, six hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and three dollars and nineteen cents.
Second. Kill me.
Discussion.
Sorry. Does this improved product have an improved lifespan?
The warranty is approximately ten years. They can't guarantee any further than that, but they do expect a few years more longevity than previously's products, yes.
Is there any other discussion?
Just a question. This new product, is that in use currently on Field Number Three?
Yes. So, this product was installed on Fields Three and Four. The original product is on Fields One and Two. So, the next ten years or so will give us some comparison of the two.
All right. And the experience so far has been positive, I trust?
It has been positive, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
So, the last item is approval of a Lacey Makerspace funding model, and Director Rick Walk will provide that background.
Thank you again. And to start off, I first want to introduce and acknowledge we have some members of the Lacey Makerspace effort here in the audience. We have Graham Sacrisson, who's the Chair of the Board for the Makerspace. We have Brad Hooper, who's a member of the Board. We also have Nate Peters here with St. Martin's University. And up front next to Graham is Joseph Anderson, who's our Director of the Makerspace and the one responsible for managing the day-to-day operations, developing the curriculum and training programs for, again, the day-to-day activities. So, before the council tonight is a request to allocate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the two-and-a-half million-dollar Economic Development Reserve Fund to the Makerspace to continue funding and operations for the next three years. The, a little bit of background on this space, this idea started back in two thousand and sixteen, and it started with the conversations between folks in the community, the city, and a lot of our partners out there, that all members of the community. As that idea started talking, people started coming together and working and developing that idea, then they found a kind of a foundation partnership developed out of that between the Thurston Economic Development Council, St. Martin's University, and the City of Lacey. With the Thurston Economic Development Council, they were able to provide kind of a home for the nonprofit of the Makerspace under their 501(c)(3) status with the Center for Business Innovation. St. Martin's University was able to provide space on their campus to house the facility. And then, the City of Lacey was able to put an initial investment of two hundred thousand dollars to lease the space for three years, as well as funds going towards some of the initial equipment purchase. So, that got us off the ground, and that with a lot of other community support, volunteer effort, and hard work from a lot of our volunteers. We also had some other funding support from the community that included around a total of thirty-five thousand dollars from MGR Development, SEJ Alliance, Forma Construction, Perry Shea, Port of Olympia, and then Esqali Tribe. So, we've seen a lot of general support for this effort. So we've seen a lot of general support for this effort. So as we started planning and developing the business plan, we launched the space back in June of 2019 as a soft opening, so we can start working out any particular kinks. And that evolved into a grand opening in October of last year. And we had, we were met with a lot of success out of those efforts. We had a lot of support and a lot of attendance to those grand opening and it really kind of got us off on the right foot. Some other successes with the the space today is we have about, since the day of opening, we've had about 136 memberships that would have been purchased. We run about an average of about 30 to 35 memberships a month running total. Those memberships can be bought as an annual membership or a monthly membership. And we also have different membership qualities for a kind of an executive maker down to general membership and then veterans and student levels as well. We also have partnerships, again, with St. Martin's University with their purchasing memberships for their students so that, as well as with South Beach Sound Community College. And what's, why is that so important is that while they have those, some of those facilities on their campuses, students doing their project or tinkering or working with things cannot access that once those campuses are closed for the day. So this provides a outlet for them to work in the evenings, on the weekends, to help with their class projects, as well as just work and get the support and additional hands-on skills training, which is one of the the main goals for the City of Lacey is to develop skilled workforce and support our business community with this effort. Other highlights of the space and where we see some success, especially with the initial goals of the City of Lacey is we have several entrepreneurs and business activities going on in the space. We have about five different businesses from a couple of guys cutting out custom motorcycle parts on the plasma cutter. We have a wedding planner that is able to develop products for swag for their wedding business. We also have K&amp;B Architecture that uses a laser engraver to develop 3D models and a couple of others. We also have some prototypes being developed in that space as ideas with things such as a waterless toilet, a rocket thruster, a 3D model of how a rocket thruster could be designed, artificial intelligence mapping drone, child protection monitor, and a couple of other activities such as that. And that's really what we're trying to do, is spur opportunity for people in the community that have a business idea or a product idea, that they come to a space and be able to learn how to develop, work with 3D printers, laser cutters, CNC-type machinery, to be able to create prototypes and eventually potentially launch a business or develop a skill. One of the great benefits of being on the St. Martin's University campus is it's directly connected to their advanced engineering programs and several of the professors there are looking at developing what they call a Technic Design Institute, which provides research and development as well as quality control and advice, a nice little platform. And again, that partnership with the Center of Business Innovation Center with the EDC, it provides business support services. So somebody does have that idea and it's getting ready to go, then you all of a sudden you have that training and support to start a business that can help reduce some of the pitfalls of a business launch. So again, some of the other nice things that have happened over the last year, the Association of Washington Business had their Manufacturing Week and they decided to come by and stop by the Makerspace on that tour. And as a result of that tour, they actually ended up highlighting the Makerspace in their publication as one of those great elements. So again, there's been a lot of community support and but we still need to try to get this off the ground and build that community relation and and funding support. So the idea proposal tonight is basically providing a public-private match opportunity. So we talked about $350,000 and we looked at a three-year commitment. The idea would be that the city would fund this next year of operation at a level of about $175,000. That will provide the opportunity for the staff and the volunteers to focus on building community relations and getting funding support from the from the community to raise funds for operation of Year Two. If that is, goal is met, and then the city could commit to fund Year Three and we can build that momentum for the Makerspace. So that's a really quick overview of a lot of different pieces to it. So again, our our ask for tonight is a motion to approve the $350,000 of Economic Development Reserves to fund the Lacey Makerspace for the next three years. And with that, I will be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
A motion, please.
I move that the council approve the $350,000 of Economic Development Reserves to the Lacer-Makey, Lacey Makerspace with requirements to provide financial support to the Lacey Makerspace for the next three years.
Second.
It's been moving seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
No, there's already been substantial community support, right? Financially and?
There has been and and of all those commitments, the Port of Olympia has committed $10,000. They review that for a period of three years, for the next three years. MGR Development has made a three-year commitment of funding. So we have raised $35,000 and we also are have, we're having conversations with other community funders and trusts in the community that, of course, those relationships and those conversations take some time to develop for the final, final gift, if you will. In addition, this will allow us time to to apply for grants from the federal or state governments. And a lot of the, we found out when we first launched, is they really want to have demonstrated success. So we were first asking for those grants before we opened the doors, but now we have the doors open and we can demonstrate the success and the value to the community. We can put us in better leverage for those those federal economic development agency funds.
Anything else?
I see on the balance sheet where it shows the the build-out and the equipment to the tune of about 41. So in the next one, that'll be gone and our expenses will be less on that? Does that sound right?
Talk about on the expenses of the profit and loss statement?
Yeah, on the P and L there.
For equipment.
Well, the.
The equipment was purchased at 38.8?
Yeah, we have have a baseline of equipment purchase, but we're, and that, but we also have the ongoing maintenance of that equipment. And because of the the expense of maintenance and keeping that equipment off and running, plus we want to build up a reserve fund going forward, though, as we go through replacement and upgrades, we can do so.
Just to give this council a little bit of heads up, as maybe you know, I am the Honorary Commander of the 446th Airlift Wing, McCord. And earlier this week, I saw a presentation of what they're calling Spark Tank. It's kind of a, you know, a copy of Shark Tank where the the military gets together and author, you know, looks at innovative ideas that they have and proposes an idea. And the 446, what they've done is they've developed a unique tool that one of their members have come up with to help pull batteries out that was taking a long time, causing a lot of problems. And their whole push is to go on Spark Tank and hopefully win it so they can get a 3D printer and so they can start printing these and then start using them in several different applications. And so I was talking to them afterwards and said, you know, we have a Lacey Makerspace that has some 3D printers and, because the other concern they said is like, well, if we come up with that, I'm not sure if we need to patent it or what's going on. And so I was talking to a couple of people after, after and they said, well, there's a huge interest from a lot of people on JBLM to learn how to use 3D printers and to do this sort of thing. And so it it sounds like there might be some interest there on JBLM, regardless if they get the 3D printer or not, on learning out how to train it, how to patent, and also build for them to tinker around on innovation for for on JBLM. So I think that's another opportunity and I've been meaning to talk to you and we'll exchange some information afterwards, but we had, sometimes we forget about our our friends up north and the the huge amount of interest they would have in this as well. So I think it's a great opportunity and I think we could build some great relationships up there as well.
That's a great point. And other opportunities that we're working on too is our great relationship with the Esqali Tribe, their Tarot Group, which is the, their Economic Development Group for their their members. And and we're working with them to be able to have some cross-pollination with their activities and this space to complement each other.
Great. Is there any other discussion?
You guys just always hear me talking about private and public partnerships and partnerships in in general, but this adds another one to it and that's institutional. The university being involved in this is, makes it even that much more better, community effort grassroots.
Great, I agree. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the $350,000 of the Economic Development Reserve to Lacey Makerspace, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I just also want to thank Graham and Joseph and Brad and eight and all the other folks that have been here because with all their hard work and dedication, we wouldn't be at this point. So I really appreciate them as well as the Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Keep up the great work.
Mayor and City Council, just one other item, just to report out. As you know, we had a workshop last Saturday for the accessory dwelling unit. This is somewhat of a step trying to deal with the housing issues that we're facing as a region now, albeit a very small step. And as council knows, you help support actually pre-approved plans for structures in the 480 square foot and 600 square foot category. And so these are people that maybe have lots in the City of Lacey, say 10,000 square feet or more, that could actually accommodate an accessory dwelling structure. But I'm happy to report out, we had really about 160 people show up. This council chambers was full. It was pretty impressive. And so Arson's group was there to kind of explain kind of the process and the benefit of having pre-approved plans. We had Jessica Brandt from our planning department actually lead and kind of provide the background information. We had Homes First there to talk about, you know, if you want to look at property management companies. And we also had lenders there too for people that are interested. And I know we've had a lot of counter activity, so there's been a lot of interest and there may be another follow-up workshop, but I just want to report that I know Councilmember Miller attended the workshop. He may have some other observations, but I think it was a highly successful in terms of public outreach.
So I actually came over, but what it seemed like, we almost needed another one of those because they were spilling out into the hallway.
We need an accessory dwelling unit just for the meeting.
Exactly.
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's great. That's great news. Thank you.
It looked packed when I watched it on Facebook Live, so.
So we're on to standing general committees. First up is the Utilities Committee. Well, is that right? That's the Utilities Committee minutes. How about the Community Relations and Public Affairs? I have two.
Utilities?
Utilities and Community Relations.
Yeah, so first up is the Utilities Committee.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'm the, I chair that, but I was out of town, so.
Councilmember Miller, can you quickly give that report? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No worries. We met last week. I, we, man, what did we, we didn't really have a whole lot to go over.
The the meeting minutes are, should be in your agenda.
Okay, so we went over the utility locating program. We had a nice presentation from one of the city guys, one of the workers, and he just talked about, you know, outlining where marking for digging, the city responsibility for locating, the locator trucks that they use, how they go about doing that, and the the need to staff and receive a location request and how that entire process works. It's a very interesting system. The cost of it is not low, but at the same time, they handle a lot of work orders, the number of work orders that they work, that they handle, it's somewhere around 6,800 locate requests in in 2019. And there's really just two vans out there doing it. So the amount of work that these two vans do is just immense.
Great, thank you for that report.
That was my report.
Next up is the Community Relations. And, great, thank you.
It was the same situation. I was out of town the hour later when this meeting happened.
Apologize for the mix-up. So we met February 3rd, councilmembers present, where myself and Carolyn Cox, staff Scott Spence, Jen Burbidge, and Perry Edmonds. And we had an action to approve Community Relations Public Affairs Committee Agenda. Motion made. And we talked about the Blue Star Byway Memorial Marker Dedication Ceremony to be held on Flag Day, June 14th, at the Civic Plaza. The National Garden Club's established the format for the formal ceremony and the Gold Star family memorial groundbreaking is going to piggyback with the the Blue Star, which is good news. So that should draw a crowd, hopefully. And all on Flag Day Ceremony will also take place during that time. Staff will coordinate efforts with the VFW and the Thurston County Realtors Association for Flag Day Ceremony. And my recommendations, if you have not attended a Flag Day at the Lacey Civic Plaza, it's quite an event. Fire Department comes out and brings out one of the biggest flags you've ever seen and it's a great time, so thank you.
Thank you, Realtors.
Thank you. Next up is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I'm up first. The Mayor's Forum met the last Friday in Yelm and we requested that John Toonheim come and give a report along with Chair Hutchinson from the county about the the work that's being done for the County Courthouse complex. And so it was really just an update to to all the mayors of where they're at in this process, what, you know, what their, you know, the outlook is, the timeframe, and really to discuss some of the facts behind the courthouse complex. You know, it was brought up during this time that, you know, the last time this was brought up in Thurston County was in 2004. And back in 2004, it was a hundred thousand, $100 million proposal, you know, and here we are, which for multiple reasons didn't go forward, but here we are having to address it again and the and the price tag is up to, you know, 225 million dollars, up to 250 million, with 25 million being added by the City of Olympia. And so this is an issue that's obviously not going away and that the price tag is continuing to grow. And so, you know, it was obviously talked about that there's $50 million of of upgrades were just to keep the County Courthouse and functioning over the next 10 years. And so obviously, they need to figure out a plan about that. So that is the the Mayor's Forum. Transportation Policy Board met bright and early yesterday morning. And first up on our agenda was the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. And I was re-elected as the Chair. I think this is my eighth consecutive year as the Chair. And and Graham Sacrament was re-elected as the Vice Chair, so thank you for all you do there, Graham. Really, the the major topic was the, talking about our regional transportation plan and they're adding a new WashDOT facilities chapter to the RTP, which will be updated in July of this year. The new addition of this plan will be a chapter discussing the WashDOT's facilities such as I-5, the US-12, State Route 507, et cetera. And, you know, state facilities are a key component to the regional transportation system, including this chapter in the RTP can help to better line the regional and state transportation solutions. WashDOT has obviously a core responsibility to preserve the structural integrity of the state highway system, but looking at their shortfalls in 2018 alone, it was 13.2 million compared to what's needed and and funding available. So recently, there has been an I-5 planning efforts to include a near-term study, which has been complete, and also a mid and long-term range strategies, which will, should be complete here shortly. That next step of the I-5 planning process is that planning environmental leakage reports that recommends strategies coming out of the mid and long-term range strategies. One of the concerns I had brought up and I've requested that hopefully the staff will come back next month and talk about is that the top three strategies coming out of that mid and long-term range study is talking about land use, transportation demand management, and transit. And the question is, is yes, we need to do those things and continue to look at what we need to do to improve I-5 from the JBLM corridor through Thurston County. And as of yet, that and isn't in that report. And so we were told that, you know, the report isn't complete yet and hopefully through some conversations, that will, that and will be included and it's not one or the other. And so I'm looking forward to next month and hearing more about the I-5 strategy and WashDOT's response to that. Next, we talked about a Capitol Campus project, which is really focusing on looking at. on looking at alternative timing and flexible schedules for the state to help alleviate some congestion off of I-5. And they're looking at a couple of different strategies. And this has really come out of some studies that have been around for a long time. What they're finding is they're having a hard time really getting the state to adopt some of these strategies. And it's the same thing that, you know, we saw face here, and it's one of the issues I, I talked about. You know, government is a service provider, and we're, we're looking at providing service Monday through Friday. And so how we get around that through the flexible schedules is, is, can be an issue. And so we need to look at a whole range of strategies on, on how we can do that. And so we're looking forward to seeing how that sort of works its way out. And then we had, of course, we had a 2020 legislative, legislative session update of a lot, what's going on right now. And so cutoffs, some cutoffs, key cutoffs have happened, and we're going through the process. And so that is my report. Next up is the Deputy Mayor.
So the Joint Animal Services Commission, Jazzcom, met Monday, February 10th. And we had election of officers. So Olympia Councilmember Lisa Parsley was re-elected for a second term as Chair, and I was again elected as Vice Chair. We approved a budget amendment to accept a new revenue source through JBLM to, of $40,560 to fund a full-time driver position. So it's being funded by JBLM. The driver will be available to drive to the base to pick up animals when needed. But when not, the driver will be used for anything we need for Jazzcom, including like vet runs and stuff. And it's expected that the position will be filled by March. We changed the meeting date to the first Monday of the month at 5:30. And lastly, the Director reported that during the heavy rain period, a property owner who was being flooded turned over 30 dogs to the shelter. And so they had to be dispersed and adopted, et cetera. I'm going, I could do LOT, but I'm going, which I will, but I'm going to the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, which met yesterday in the morning, February 12th. And because it goes to some of the issues that have been brought up recently. So the Chair, Jim Cooper, and I, as Vice Chair, will be gone March 11th. So Ty Mensor, Commissioner, was appointed to chair that meeting. And I was again appointed to be on the Finance Committee. And then a Personnel Committee was appointed. We had several hearings over compliance issues for outdoor burning. We actually won those, and the citations were issued. And then this is the issue that I, I think is important. The air quality report for January for Lacey had 31 good air quality days. And that's great. It was consistent with all through all the six counties. The report for all of 2019 for Lacey was 303 good days, 24 moderate air quality days, and two days that were unsafe for sensitive groups. And when you look at the goal for Washington air quality, which is 98% of days with a particulate matter 2.5 microns cubic meter, less than 20.4 microns meter cubed, yeah, less than microns cubed in Lacey, which really, for the council members, when you say Lacey, it's Thurston County, because, but the monitoring is in Mountain View School. So they always list it as Lacey. In 2018, we exceeded this by 7.7 microns meter squared. But when it looked at wildfire data, that was the increase. Without it, we were well below the 20.4 microns. And in 2019, we also stayed under the amount. However, when it is graphed as long-term trends for ORCA, you'll see more and more days over a seven-year span that show increased worsening air quality. And it literally, it's number of days at unsafe for sensitive groups or worse. And that has been, for over those seven-year span, has totally increased in poor air quality, or moderate air quality, or, or worse. And I think that's kind of significant, the air quality is getting worse and worse. So with that, ORCA had to also give up their, a bank credit card. Apparently, Bank of America won't continue with cards for organizations without putting liability on individuals. So they are looking at KeyBank or US Bank for replacement cards, so that they don't, individuals of the organization don't get impacted. And then LOT met also yesterday in the evening, and we reviewed the draft 2020 Board of Directors Work Plan and a few bills, items that are pertinent to LOT, which are still, at that time, were still alive. We had a lively discussion on our reclaimed water planning and policy. The county wants to put reclaimed water as a possible project on the RIA 13 Watershed and Restoration Committees' list to support about 2,200-plus exempt wells outside the UGA. And so they are asking LOT to support a feasibility study. The problem is, or I, I should say, problems are, one that cities, especially Tomater and Lacey, plan on using reclaimed water as future water right mitigation. And that, I would like to add that this, the, the other thing, it would mean sending reclaimed water outside the UGA. And then the other thing is, the county really has no reclaimed water allocation based on the ILA. So, so we're kind of dealing with a kind of conundrum. What we decided to do, the Board, is to bring it up to our councils and discuss it and see, I want to know what the council wants me to advocate for. And so I'm hoping we can put it on a work session and bring our public works people in there to kind of give an update. So we have some, I'm kind of, personally, I think it doesn't make sense to have a feasibility study of something that is probably totally impossible to do. It, it doesn't, you should put on this list something that is potentially good and doable, and rather than something that isn't. But anyway, we, we could have a discussion later for it. So we postponed that until next month. We reviewed the septic conversion support program for city use, and we changed a small section of the guidelines to say, just one little section, if more than three years passes between preapproval and notice to proceed, and we changed that, it was, did say property connection, but notice to proceed, the frozen CDC rate will no longer apply. And it's just to make the statement clear. And that will come before the Board probably next month for approval. We decided that the Board members during a work session will sit in on the RFQ presentations of three companies that will look at cost of service between residential and commercial ratepayers. And then we appointed Commissioner Mensor as a representative to sit on the Sea Level Rise Response Plan Coordination Committee. So our business meeting, we elected new officers. Olympia City Councilmember Lisa Parsley is now President. Tomater Mayor Pinkett is again Vice Chair. And the Secretary, because, and the Treasurer, because of legal fiduciary responsibility, it was appointed Megan McAuliffe with the LOT's Acting Administrative Services Supervisor, and Justin Long, our LOT Finance Director, is Treasurer. And I was again appointed as the Representative to RPC, yay. And Commissioner Mensor is my alternate. And after a short discussion, I was again appointed on the Capitol Lake to Shoots Estuary EIS Executive Work Group. And the EIS is being prepared by the Department of Enterprise Services since they manage Capitol Lake. We approved the Sea Level Rise inter-local agreement with the city of Olympia and the Port of Olympia for continued coordination on Sea Level Rise response. And then Justin Long, our Finance Director, presented the Board with a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for LOT's Comprehensive Annual Finance Report for 2018. And this is the 12th consecutive year we have received the award. And then lastly, we had a presentation of updates on several capital projects, including the biological process improvements and the ultraviolet disinfection upgrades. And then after the meeting, we took a tour of the ultraviolet disinfection building, which is almost complete. And besides being safer, more effective, and easier to maintain, the new components are significantly more energy efficient, saving LOT additional costs to run. And I encourage the Board to take a tour of LOT and to see the new changes. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cox.
Okay. Regional Housing Council did not meet in January. The next meeting will be February 20th. Health and Human Services met this past Monday, and we approved funding priorities, scoring criteria, and the review process for applicants for housing and emergency needs grants. And these will be, you know, federal, local, and state dollars that we'll be handing out. On Tuesday, County Commissioners accepted our recommendations. So that will be the criteria against which applications are judged. I understand we're going to have a city representative on the technical team that will do the, the early look at the applications and score them. And then the Health and Human Services Council will come up with a final list of recommendations to the county, which we hope will just bless it, and good things will happen from there. And then Inter-City Transit met on February 5th. And a couple of exciting things came out of that meeting. Number one, we officially adopted the new Route 65 for northeast Lacey, as well as some other minor service change packages. The option that staff recommended, recommended after doing a lot of outreach to the community, was Option D. And I know that's a little disappointing to the North Hurst School District. They had wanted us to go and go out 15th that way, so that perhaps high school kids could take advantage of it. But they literally could not get the bus in and out without having to block traffic and create problems. So for now, at least, the bus is going to originate at our Transit Center, go out Martin, north on Carpenter, east on Britton Parkway, and then kind of do that whole, we'll, I'm a loop up to 41st and back down Marvin Road. So that's very exciting, and it's going to start on March 22nd. So coming, coming soon. And we've been hearing nothing but good things, that this will be, you know, a boon to Lacey residents, and certainly the employers and their staffs in northeast Lacey. So yay. The other really exciting piece coming out of that is that they had the first month's ridership for January, and ridership is up 20% in the first month of zero fare service, which is exactly what we were hoping was going to happen. This means fewer people in single-passenger vehicles on congested streets. It means more efficient use of the bus fleet. And hopefully, this will also mean a reduction in carbon emissions in Thurston County. So we're very happy about that. We elected Ryan Warner, who's Citizen Representative, and has served as Vice Chair the past couple of years as the new Chair of Inter-City Transit. And I was chosen as Vice Chair. And I will also represent Inter-City Transit, Transit on the Thurston Regional Planning Council. So happy about that. And then, just lastly, the grand opening for the new building at the Olympia Transit Center is scheduled for Thursday, March 19th. And all are invited to come and tour it. And the building is expected to be in service by March 30th. A footnote to that is that Greyhound will begin operations out of there instead of the old building on Seventh and Capitol. So exciting times at Inter-City Transit. And that's my report.
Well, that's a long time coming for the Greyhound, for sure. Thank you. So Councilmember Greenstein couldn't make it tonight, so he's excused. Councilmember Miller.
Thurston Thrives met on January 27th. Some exciting things that came out of that were $1 million was awarded to Family Support Services to build 60 units of affordable housing. That's very exciting. 60 units is much needed in Thurston County. We need as many units as we can get. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan is about to be published. It's going to focus on how we implement the plan into action, and the impact of state law and if emission standards are fully implemented. Community Design Annual Spring Forum is coming. So very exciting there. The South Sound Food Network, there's an All-Day Food Summit in Lacey on March 14th. The vendors and growers and producers will be there. Public safety and just final touches are being put on the new law enforcement diversion program. This program pulls together partnerships between different agencies, including law enforcement, public health. So it'll divert people from jail to treatment is the, is the real goal there. The school district replacement levy is on the ballot. I'm sure you guys have all seen it, as your ballot was due two days ago. And that was the report on that one. Also had the Thurston County Regional Planning met on February 7th, that morning at 8 o'clock. We went over a lot of things in that meeting. The Conservation District joined TRPC, and they are joining as a non-voting member, and they make the 23rd member total. So membership is growing, which is nice. More people are getting, and more institutions are getting involved in, in wanting to develop and strategize the, the growth of Thurston County. We went over the financial forecast for a regional transportation plan, the county revenues, and the, from property tax and fuel tax, and the federal taxes, and local funds, and, and just kind of, you know, gauging where all the funds are coming from. We did go over the state fuel tax forecast. That can be exciting if, if that's what you're into. Transportation Benefit District. We did talk about the road, roadway maintenance in Thurston County. There's actually 1,600 miles of road that costs about $25 million to maintain. So go over those numbers and talk about how we're going to, you know, keep that up. And I went over the revenue for 2020 through 2029, and the $832 million worth of expenses that that's going to incur, that's been budgeted for. We did go over some climate mitigation things. Allison Osterberg, the LOT Plan, partnering with TRPC, moving towards more carbon-neutral communities as soon as we can possibly get there. So it is on the forefront of, of everybody's mind. And, you know, the efforts that you guys are doing are applauded and, and not, you know, invisible. We are all fans of cleaner energy and less carbon waste. So you guys are on the right track, and we're right behind you. There, let's see, we went to Phase 1 of the new emission targets, which is 24% by 2030, 85% by 2050. And we talked a lot about buildings, especially because we really need to get those clean, cleaner energy. We went over the legislative update, and all the different bills that are out there right now, the transportation bills, HB 1793, HB 2358, SB 55811 for the clean air standards. We, we went through every single one of them. And even the lift emissions, and the greenhouse gas emissions, and HB 2427 for climate change, 6223, the community solar projects. And supporting the bills, moving foster care during, for drug treatment, mental health, homeless students, Thurston County lacks childcare facilities, which was a, a really big topic on that day. And we, we were missing a lot of them in our community, which is unfortunate. It's the one area in our community that if people were to plan a business, that it would grow, and it would thrive, because we just don't have enough. LTAC did not meet last month, but Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking did. And there is, there's a 5K Against Trafficking coming up. It's a 5K race. You can register for that. It is April 25th at Mountain View Church. All the proceeds go to the Fight Against Trafficking in Thurston County. I won't give you guys all the statistics tonight about trafficking and how many children come up missing per year, and how many people get sucked into that kind of lifestyle. come up missing per year and how many people get sucked into that kind of lifestyle. But the numbers are shocking. And one of the things about, about this community is that we are based and located right on I-5. This is, this is one of the prime areas for trafficking and the reason why is because there's so many ways in and out, because of the ports, because of the freeways. And, and so it makes it a prime target for people trafficking because you can get to several other countries from here, not just to other states. And so if you were to look at the heat map of, you know, trafficking, you'll, you would see that our area is red hot and as hot as Los Angeles or New York or anywhere else because of the, such a strategic location. So last year, the coalition was able to raise about 20,000 after expenses and the, and the year before that as well. Those funds are used to implement programs in schools. It's called the Youth Empowerment Program. And what that program does is it teaches kids how, kids and teachers, how to recognize the signs of trafficking and to know what to do when you suspect that someone is being trafficked or some child is being mistreated and how to report it and those kinds of things. So it's a fantastic program. If you do get a chance to support it, your, your funds would be going towards a really good cause in that. State Patrol, you know, tells us that the money that we spend on prevention goes 100 times further than the money they spend on sting operations. So the cost to do sting operations, you know, $130,000, where we can buy this intellectual property for around $40,000, we can train sometimes an entire county. And we have almost got the county of Thurston fully trained. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Councilor Stedman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I hope this is, I hope this is appropriate time and I'll only briefly take a second. But many people know my father passed away recently. And I just wanted to tell people a little bit about him. So he used to tell me as a, as a young man that we could lease, we do commercial leasing to businesses local. He said, "We're going to, we're going to lease to, as local companies, preferably veteran-based or minority-owned and operated businesses every chance we get." And he'd preach that to me every single day. And, I don't know, thank you. And I just wanted to go through a list of some of the tenants over the years that we leased to, like Tacoma Screw, local family. You know, they only had one or two locations in our first building we built on Martin Way. And fast forward 40 years later, almost, and they have almost 20 locations, I guess. There's Crown Science, Lyndon Steve Folk. Steve passed away just a couple of years ago, but he had MS. So he had challenges in his life. She's a female, she's minority. It goes down the line. Evergreen Treatment Services provides medical help for people that are addicted to opioids. My father thought that was very, very important. If people need help, give them the help that they need. Baster Robbins, for another 40-something years. Mike and Sarah Peoples, you know, another husband and wife, as locals they come, raised their whole entire family here, their whole lives. They bought that business from their father. Northwest Indian Fisheries, all the tribes are associated with that. My father and I were really good friends with Billy Frank and me and Willie, you know, it's my father and his father. And now Willie's tribal council member and Ms. Qualley and I'm city council member. And again, minorities and, and people live in the community. I could go on and on. There's DK Hair Salon and Butterfly Nail Salon and there are Vietnamese families, Korean families. Every single walk of life in this region that would have probably never had the opportunity that my father provided. And I just think it's a huge testament to him and our community. So thank you for letting me share that, guys.
Thank you. And best to your family. Love you, buddy. Councilmember Cunkel.
Thank you, Mike. God bless you, man. Olympia-Lacey Tomwater Visitor and Convention Bureau will meet on St. Patrick's Day. That'll be our first board meeting, so nothing to report there. The Lacey South Sound Chamber, a couple of good things going on there. Current events, oops, I pushed the wrong button. So these first two weeks of February marks the 17th anniversary of Read Around Lacey Campaign. The Chamber partners with North Thurston Public Schools, the City of Lacey, Timberland Regional Library, and local businesses to participate in reading with the students. Campaign helps students build great reading habits while applying what they learn to real-life situations. 17 years they've been doing that. It's pretty cool. The Chamber just recently had their annual business awards luncheon. We had many local Lacey businesses and employers acknowledged for their great works, including City of Lacey for Workplace Excellence. Congratulations. And looking at the year in review in 2019, Lacey Chamber helped promote local businesses by hosting seven grand openings of new businesses and seven after-hours events at various business locations as the 501 search. The Chamber also raised and donated over $10,000 for the Kidweiler Scholarship Foundation last year. And that's pretty amazing. Economic Development Council, our EDC board, met last January 22nd. New board members officially seated for the board included Jessica Bateman, City of Olympia, myself, Charlie Schneider, City of Tomwater, Joe DePinto, City of Yom, Darryl Fortner with Heritage Bank, and David Burnett, Confederated Tribes of the Chehalis. And our current finance report will be available next board meeting, this 26th. And we briefly went over the 2020 work plans and metrics. That is my report.
Thank you. We've reached the end of our agenda. And so hopefully everyone out there is safe and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. And I'll call this meeting adjourned.